COVID, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, school committee meeting to order. Our first order of business is a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and justiciable for all. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Our next order of business is the high school student report. This evening we have student representative Joy Martinez- Neralda, Ms. Neralda, please.
Good evening. I'm Joy Martinez and I'm a junior at Wapo High School. Wapo High School has been very busy while we all work hard as we near the end of term two and the end of semester one, with the final day of the semester being January twenty-first. Students are working very diligently to finish out the semester strong. As things start to get into full swing, there are some new updates from the students. For those who wanted to participate in the T E C internship, registration begins January nineteenth and the first virtual meeting is January twenty-sixth. For those who wish to participate in music lessons, registration is open for the W P S music department until February fourth, where the second session of lessons will run from February seventh to June seventeenth. Along with everything else, the first edition of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Newsletter for the winter of twenty twenty-two is now up for everyone to view. As for sports, we have an exciting few weeks up ahead with boys' basketball playing Milton last Tuesday, and we're seeking their sixth consecutive win and ended with the score of Wapo fifty versus Milton twenty-nine. As for girls' basketball, they ended their game on Tuesday with a win against Milton fifty-two to eighteen. Congrats, boys and girls' basketball. Wapo Boys Hockey had a game scheduled for Wednesday versus Milton where they hopefully took home a victory. Track and Gymnastics also have games scheduled in the near future. Track today against Wellesley and Gymnastics at Wellesley on Friday. We wish them all the best of luck as they continue to play throughout the season. Along with everything else, the W H S Humane Society Club has just released a Pets of Wapo Heist Calendar, which included all the Pets of Wapo High School community. All were encouraged to participate and all proceeds will be donated to animals in need. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. Ms. Martinez, questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Ahern.
So, a question about, was that a calendar that's available for purchase?
Yeah, it was available for purchase. I think they ended sales recently, sorry.
It's good to know that.
Any further questions or comments? How's it going? How are you?
It's going pretty good.
Thank you so much for joining us this evening.
No, I was just gonna say, welcome to the, to this committee.
Thank you, thank you.
We like when, when students give input, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good. Seeing no further questions or comments, we have, we'll move on to, yes, thank you, Dr. Goff. We'll move on to the business portion of our agenda. If I have no objection, I'd like to take the COVID update with Nurse Garvin and then the science update with Department Head O'Malley out of order. If that's fitting, Nurse Garvin, if you want to come down.
Thank you, and I can start and then.
Doctor Goff, you want to kick us off?
Kathy, you can go and so we can, we can get her home. So, in terms of COVID cases, last week, we had two hundred and eighteen cases and a hundred and twenty-three cases the week prior. So, you can see, we all know that the cases have risen dramatically. As of this morning, last time I checked, our positive cases for this week was one seventy-five. I'm sure it's gone up since then and I anticipate that that's gonna surpass the two thousand, sorry, two hundred and eighteen. In terms of the Wapo Health Department, as they anticipated, Wapo's positivity rate continues to rise. Wapo's positivity rate for the most recent reporting period, you can see is twenty-three point seven eight percent. And you can see that, I just had, gave you a handout on that, so you can kind of see the, the trajectory of that since the beginning of the year. And it's, it's jumped because I think we last reported school committee in December was a little over five percent. So, like I mentioned, you have a copy of the positivity rate from the previous weeks. However, this should be good news around the corner. Experts indicate that the surge will soon be at its peak. They predicted between January tenth and January twenty-second, and then we'll begin a downhill journey. With the high number of absences, some have asked, you know, to move towards remote learning, but doing so, just to be clear, is not allowed at the state level. I really have to commend our staff who, just when they have finally, when they've gotten into this routine, you know, into October and November and getting into the routine, they have faced yet another challenge with the high number of students' absences from classes due to COVID. It's really been a revolving door. I want to commend our staff who continue to put supports in place for students who are absent. They change up assignments, projects, and testing timelines so that our students can continue to learn and not drown in makeup work. Many staff have been out these past two weeks, so I appreciate your patience in responding back to our families because they've been out ill. I believe last Thursday, we had seventy-one staff out in the district, so that snow day came at a, at a perfect time. It's been all hands on deck to cover classes, keep lunches going, ensure extended day supervision, and reconfigure transportation. So, thank you to our teachers, our counselors, and our support staff. Particular shout-out, of course, to our nurses and our principals who have really been working on these COVID responses. In terms of the mask mandate, on January tenth, Commissioner Riley announced that he's extending the mask mandate requirement in schools through Monday, February twenty-eighth. The department will continue to work with medical experts and state health officials to evaluate the mask requirement beyond February twenty-eighth. The eighty percent threshold policy still remains in effect. Speaking of vaccination rates, our middle schools, at Byrd is at, almost at a sixty-one percent vaccination rate. Johnson is sixty-four point four percent vaccination rate. And then the high school again is over the eighty, eighty percent, eighty-two and a half percent. It, just as a reminder to school committee, I know we, I mentioned this before the break, but I thought it would be worth mentioning again. The DESI-approved waiver request for Wapo High, you know, as we're confirmed that the school has met the eighty percent threshold rate as set out in the department's policy, but there are a few important considerations if we do move forward, if or when we move forward to lift the mask mandate for vaccinated individuals at the high school. Unvaccinated individuals are still required to wear a mask. We'll support vaccinated individuals to continue to wear masks at Wapo High School. If cases increase, we're able to reinstate the mask requirement. DESI reserves the right, with consultation with medical experts, to reinstitute the mask mandate as they just did. All staff and students would still need to be masked on buses, as well as indoor and athletic events. And the school committee can decide any time when to lift the mask mandate. There's no expiration date. However, I do request that the school committee give us a two-week turnaround time so we can get permission slips out and get things returned and organized. We're required to follow this process with any other buildings that reach the eighty percent threshold. Just as a reminder, as you know, the town administrator has required the wearing of masks at all town buildings at this time, which is in line with the Wapo Health Department. And finally, when the time does come to make that transition, the Wapo Health Department advises the school committee to entertain the idea of providing a metric, which would be used as a determining factor for when a masking should occur. The Wapo Health Department recommends a three percent community positivity metric. This would mean that as long as the positivity rate in the community was greater than three percent, then masks would be required in school. And this metric is in addition to the eighty percent. And you can see from the town positivity rate that you have there, it was, it was under that for quite some time, and then it started ratcheting up in mid-November. Good news, Booster Clinic, the Wapo Health Department is offering the Pfizer vaccine to Wapo public school students ages twelve and up. And this is, this is the second time that they've offered this clinic. These clinics are going to be offered, of course, for those twelve and up, to high school and middle school students who need their first or second dose, or for those eligible for their boosters, and that's at least five months after their second shot in the primary series. There is pre-registration required. I'll get that out tomorrow. The principals are getting it out in the e-notes for the dates. What's great is they're going to be going out to the schools. Thank you, Trish Fisher and Melissa Renary, for doing this, so parents don't have to take time off from work. So, for example, at Wapo High School, we'll be on January twenty-fifth from eight-thirty in the morning until, until ten a.m. Byrd will also be January twenty-fifth from ten-thirty to twelve, and Johnson is also January twenty-fifth from twelve-thirty to two. I know the, they're working on the ages five to eleven group. Kathy and I just spoke today, and it looks like they're, they're looking at a date in February. So, stay tuned on that, and we'll get that out as, as soon as we have it. And I am going to stop there for COVID.
Nurse Garvin.
Very thorough. I can give an update on our testing program. This week, our, since we came back from holiday break, we've tested two hundred and eighty-two students in our test-to-stay program, either for symptomatic testing or in order to stay in school because of being in close contact to someone else in the classroom. From the start of school, when we first started testing, the first week of September through November thirtieth, we had four positive tests in our school program. For December first through twenty-third, we had twelve, and since last Monday through today, we have had twenty-eight. So, we're certainly seeing an increase in the schools, obviously. But fortunately catching a number of students, and we're fortunate to be able to test students that don't feel well when they're at school as well. That saves a trip to the doctor, so.
Excellent. Thank you. I think we've just, actually, I'd like to just, just begin by thanking you and your staff. I know it's been a hellish period of time after the holidays with the, the number of tests you have to administer, as well as all the other normal duties of school nurses and normal sick visits and medications and check-ins and finger sixes and things like that. So, I think every one of us recognizes the incredible amount of work that you and your staff are doing. And before this evening, and we also, I think it's, it's important to acknowledge that you're doing so in a environment where guidelines from DESI shift, or expectations shift, expectations from the CDC shifts as well. It's sort of your, like, dancing on a, a moving dance floor that's also in an elevator somehow, and you're upside down. I think that would be a, a fair analogy. So, this evening, we, we once again revisit our COVID policy, which we have, as a body, have decided to do. Each time now that we do have one school that is over eighty percent, we have the recommendation from the Board of Health, which was to continue with masking in all of our schools until our schools reach below the three percent threshold. And just for the community's edification, that would, we were under three percent from, from the data we have here from six, to six-twenty-one, all the way to the week before Thanksgiving where we, we broke three percent. So, it, it is something which, where we hope to get back to very soon. And I think that really sets the stage for the, the discussion we'll have this evening. And with that, I would open it up to my colleagues for questions or comments for Dr. Goff or Nurse Garvin.
Ms. Nizio.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Nurse Leader Garvin, for everything you're doing. I'm hoping that maybe you can talk to us a little bit more about the impact of the new test-and-stay policy that was implemented last week in the schools following the guidelines that you received. Because I think, you know, we as a committee, we heard some trepidation around that change in policy from parents, and I think it would maybe be helpful to hear from you what exactly that meant in terms of the operations of our nurse, our nursing offices. Because as Mr. Buckley alluded to, you know, you've certainly had more than your fair share of, of work to be done COVID-related on top of the normal workings of the nurse offices. And I, I just would love, maybe, if you could paint a picture of kind of why the shift is necessary, when to some parents it might seem, or community members, it might seem, you know, like a downgrading of services, you know?
Right. So, we might have set ourselves up a little bit because we were actually doing a, a bit more than some other districts. So, we had always notified people in the three to six-foot range who aren't considered close contacts by DESI in the school system. I mean, if you're out and about and you have, you come down with COVID, you are supposed to notify somebody you've been in contact with for more than fifteen minutes and within six feet. That's the public health guideline. Due to the studies from last year that showed that there was minimal transmission in schools, especially at the three to six-foot range, DESI was able to determine that only students less than three feet would need to be tested for the test-and-stay program. We always notified three to six foot just to give people sort of a heads-up. But that also meant not just looking at this picture, but looking at the bigger picture as well, going out six feet for one student. And at three feet, we also would notify people who were vaccinated within that three feet because they were within three feet. Again, not everyone was doing that. So, when we started to see this increase in cases, and I think just even the testing speaks to that, you know, two hundred and eighty-two students tested, that doesn't mean we did two hundred and eighty-two tests in the last eight days. If somebody found out on Monday, if they're, if they were in close contact on Monday, they then get tested for the rest of the week, and then because their day five is Saturday, they get tested again on Monday. So, each person can generate a full five days of testing, so that's, could be over a thousand tests in the eight days. So, it was becoming too difficult to keep up with all the notifications. So, we looked at what surrounding areas we're doing. We spoke to Trish Fisher, our public health nurse. And interestingly, public health nurses, public health departments that are notifying only speak to the person who's positive now. Used to be, they got a list of the close contacts and they would reach out to the close contact and speak to them one-on-one. Now, if you're deemed positive, if I come down with COVID, I'll get a call from public health and I'll be told, this is how you figure out who you need to notify, and you will notify them yourself. So, public health departments are also not notifying anyone that's a close contact. So, we were looking for, where could we find some way to keep up with what we were doing so that we were keeping people as safe as possible? So, we looked hard at the guidelines, and they were very specific. So, what I'd like to say is where, what we shifted was, we want to notify those people who are eligible for the test-and-stay program. If you've already signed up, we're notifying you, your child will be tested because we legally need to notify you, you're gonna test your child. If you haven't signed up yet, we're giving you an opportunity to sign up here, obtain consent, and this is when your child will be tested. Or you have the option of quarantining and just let us know which will work for you. So, we kind of shifted to notification of the test-and-stay program versus an all-out notification of anyone that might have been considered a close contact at any time. I think there is so much, just to speak about the, you know, the positivity in the town, and as evidenced by the number of tests that are positive, and the numbers that go out routinely to, weekly now to the schools. I can't even read my chicken scratch, but I think like the high school had something like forty-one more cases. They had like forty-eight last week and thirty-eight half week before then. So, I think when you hear that, I like to think of it as, you are probably in your day going to be in contact with somebody who has been exposed and may come down with it in the next few days. So, you have to do sort of like a assessment of your own personal risk and, and do what's best, like the mitigating factors of masking and trying to socially distance. On the webinar recently, they said that one of the reasons for the D P H webinar that I listened to on Tuesday afternoons, one of the reasons that they shortened the quarantine, and it's kind of a misunderstanding, I think, too. People think that that means you're no longer contagious, but you are contagious for the full ten days. If you're asymptomatic, you're very much less likely to transmit it. So, people are feeling like, well, I'm on day six, I can, you know, go back to work, go back to school. But you should only do that if you're really fully asymptomatic, because otherwise you can't transmit it. The reason that was given, one of the reasons for shortening, is that only thirty percent of people were completing the mandated ten-day quarantine when they were notified they were positive. So, they felt like, they, if they shortened it, if more people would comply, maybe they could get a better response and, you know, kind of rein in the virus, so to speak. So, you know, I, I feel like it's out there, we have to, you know, take the best precautions we can. But it was, we were just too overwhelmed to do all of the extra notification that we were doing, trying to be, you know, on top of things and let everyone know. So, at this point, basically, it's, it's in your child's classroom. It's definitely in your child's classroom. If they play a sport, it's on their sports team. We have numbers of cases on everywhere. I don't think there's any room in the district or any team that hasn't been affected. So, and at this point, I'm feeling like, last year, if you knew somebody that had COVID, it was a rarity, you know? You knew somebody personally at this time that had COVID. Now, you can probably list, you know, a handful that you know personally that currently have COVID. So, it's, it's just really rampant right now. So, I, you know, I, I think we, it, it came up a little suddenly, so maybe we should have had a little more lead time, but there just wasn't any. We were, the nurses are literally working, you know, they get home from work and then they have to go back to work because then they have to contact trace. They bring home the classroom seating charts to do any of the positives that came in that day in order to get the kids tested the next day. Because the longer you wait, the more likely that you're gonna miss somebody. And then as soon as you miss somebody who's positive, then that causes a.
Right.
Another seating chart could go home. So, it's been a lot. They're working weekends, nights. They're, they're fabulous. You have a phenomenal team. They are the best nurses ever, but it's, it's, was too much. So, what, where could we cut back? We looked at other districts, talked to the public health nurse, and those are the things we came up. So, we focusing on just notifying the people that have to be notified that their child's gonna be tested.
Thank you for spelling all of that out. It was a lot of information. I think it was really important for people to, to understand the full picture. And I think just as you have had to shift your practice with new information and shifting guidelines, I think, you know, as a community, we also are having to shift maybe our expectations around what's gonna be possible in different situations and different environments. And it's, I think we're all kind of hitting a wall in terms of our ability to keep pivoting and shifting, right? And, and rolling with things, and it's understandable that, you know, there might be some frustration or anxiety expressed. But I certainly feel like, you know, you've kind of laid out the full picture for us and explained, you know, what, what's possible and what's gonna keep our kids the safest, and, and so thank you very much for that.
And I should add, if, if, if we have a child in our district who has a known issue, you know, cancer or some other immunocompromising illness, as with anything, not just with COVID, if there was a strep throat in the classroom, if there all of a sudden was seven or eight kids with the GI bug or something, those families always get a call from the nurse because of the unique situation. It was just that those kids who are healthy typically are not getting notified that they're six feet from someone while they're in school masked, you know?
Would that also apply to a student or students who maybe, for whatever reason, might not be able to articulate to their parent if they were experiencing symptoms? Would maybe those students fall in that same category of, of families that would get kind of notification in the same way? I'm thinking about students in some of our special ed programs, for example.
I feel like the, the special ed programs are so small that their classrooms are, their teachers usually would be the communicators, if that makes sense. Might not get a call from the nurse, but typically, for instance, at Danny Feen, Daniel Feeny, we've had to, if a child can't mask, for instance, which a lot of our special education children can't, those students are much more at risk. And then they end, they would have to quarantine because the guidelines are very clear. If you cannot mask, you can't be in school to participate in the program. Or once you've had it, you have to stay out a little longer. They've changed that up a little because of this particular variant. So, I think in those classrooms, they get a notification, and they also get notified that, you know, people are gonna be home. We had one class, I think, that the teacher was in the school, but the rest of the class had to be home. So, that was clear, you know? There's definitely a case in your class if the children are all at home. So, I think that, you know, I'm not sure, I can't speak to exactly that particular situation because I haven't heard of that per se, but.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions for Nurse Garvin? Comments? Mr. Ahern. Is there support available for the nursing staff during the school day or help with contact tracing?
Did you want to mention the person we have? That's absolutely wonderful. That way we just increase our services.
We're, I'm, I'm very thankful, thank you, Mike and Dr. Goff, for, they just increased my halftime resource nurse to full-time for the rest of the school year. The substitutes I have have been reaching out and saying, you know, I can't do a whole day, but I can give you two hours here, two hours there. I think every staff substitute member I have that has availability right now worked on Monday and Tuesday of this week when we were really just slammed. I think we had just under two hundred tests alone on Monday, which is hard to do. You know, so that, that was great. A number of my subs in the regular pool are not available this year because the hospitals they work for are also short-staffed, and they are paying bonuses of twenty-five dollars an hour on top of their regular pay and offering like, you know, similar to what I do, how many hours can you give me? And so, people are going in from eight to twelve and on top of their regular hourly rate, earning an extra hundred dollars. So, they're not as interested in coming to help me out this year. They'll be back next year, I'm sure, but.
So, being able to increase that position.
Yeah, that was huge. That's already an extra three and a half hours in the day that I have somebody I can count on. So, that's fabulous.
Is a, does he still offering support if districts need it, or was that only a start-of-the-year offer?
Yeah, it's, it would, it's very difficult to get them out just because other districts that are larger than us, you know, obviously, they've used them. So, we're not, so we're able to, you know, secure what we can secure. And we're very fortunate to have, you know, our departments and our health departments working with us. And that's been tremendous as well.
Yeah, and not, a lot of towns don't have that nice collaboration with the health department. And we have our own testing nurse, and I still hear from my colleagues that that's better than working with the groups that are out there. It just, because you're waiting, you know? If it's a company coming in, you don't have exactly any idea what time they're coming to the school. Whereas we were able to tell our testing nurse this week, you know, okay, you gotta start at the high school. And she and I went through that, and we got, I think it was eighty-six kids there, done quickly, relatively quickly, within about an hour and a half. So, that was pretty good. And then she went right over to the preschool, because of course the preschool, some of the kids go home early. So, that was, you know, that became a priority. Whereas if you're working with a company like C I C, they're gonna dictate where they go and what time. So, you might not get everybody tested that you need to, so.
That's great. Is the testing nurse a district, a town employee?
It's district.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Thanks for clarifying.
Anything further?
Thank you.
Other questions or comments in the committee?
Thanks, Kathy.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you. We appreciate your support. We really do.
Ms. Nizio.
Do we need to formally vote on whether or not we're gonna, what we're gonna do about high school?
No, we can take no action at this time. The chair sees no motion, so we'll see you next time, Kathy.
We're so far away, it's not even worth talking about. Bye, Kathy. Talk to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just on that point, I mean, I feel like, as Carrie mentioned, you know, there's a lot of fatigue and, you know, it's really set in. And we're. a lot of fatigue and, you know, it's really set in. And we're clearly not close to the metrics, but I mean, we have a clearly recommended metric that I think, I don't know whether we all agree upon, but, you know, there is favorable body language by many of us at that, along with the vaccination status. So, I mean, I don't know, I would, you know, obviously, it's not going to happen this week or next week, but I would just question whether or not there is actual action to be taken to set it up when it is feasible to do that.
That's a good question. I would think, we meet next as a
We do meet at the end of the
School Committee on the
The end of January.
The end of January. You know, I think, you know, the first part of your question is a question of optimism, which I think there is reason to have. I'm an optimist myself sometimes. And secondly, I think, given the large spike and some of the news reports, I would think we would probably be a lot closer at the end of the month to perhaps say, especially if it's trending down, to maybe give the superintendent that two-week lead time to say, begin to prepare for the implementation of mask optional at the high school.
Right. And I think having that two-week time that you mentioned, Sean.
Yeah.
And also, and it is, it's a balance, because you want to be able to give that lead time, but then also not confuse our families that, that, oh, oh, they're doing this. We just need to make sure that we're clear. So I agree with you, and thank you for mentioning that, giving us that lead time. And I think having that, you know, looking at that end of January, beginning of February, looking at what school committee meetings we have left, looking at the downtrend. So, you know, Kathy, the high school, and our team isn't caught short when we, we need to put that together.
Anything else? Seeing none? Moving on. Thank you, Nurse Garvin. Take care. Keep the faith. We'll see you next time. Our next order of business is our Wofford Public School Science Update. We have Ms. Mimi O'Malley, the sixth of 12 science department chair, to give us an update on all things science in our district. Thank you, Mimi.
Well, I'm happy to respond. In spite of all that dire COVID news, learning is happening at our high school and in the middle schools.
It's coming.
It's coming. Hold on one second. There you go.
There you go. There you go.
Okay.
Are you machine or?
Okay.
It's happening, Mimi, it'll happen here.
Oh, okay.
I can do it. You just tell me next slide.
Great. You can move to the next one already. But I am happy to be here, because I love talking about science and science education, so I'm always happy to do that. You can go to the next one. So I thought I'd start by just giving you an overview. I know you've already gotten our results for standardized testing. Just to kind of reiterate a few things, at the high school, the kids take the MCAS in freshman year. They take the introductory physics MCAS, and it's based on a full year of content. And then also at the high school, we have our AP exams, and those are also based on each year, of course, content. At the middle school, they also take an MCAS in science, technology, and engineering, and that's based on three years of content. So it's all the science they get for sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, and then include their tech education as well on that exam. We still are looking at kids in the classes of 22 and 23 at the high school. They can use the competency determination if they weren't able to take it, because we did have the 2020 when the MCAS wasn't offered. And we're still also looking at the Department of Ed in Massachusetts, and science hasn't completely moved the MCAS to the newer frameworks in 2016. So we're still looking at a hybrid between the older frameworks, which they call the legacy frameworks, and the 2016 standards. So teachers are still kind of blending those together, getting the kids ready for those exams. The middle school ones are all the 2016 standards at this point. They kind of moved quickly with middle school and elementary school, and they've moved a lot slower in adopting the frameworks at the high school level, just because they're different than the core ones that they looked at. The next one. So our MCAS results, and these are numbers, are the number of kids, or students who passed. So our ninth grade introductory physics, we had 94% pass rate. It was a little different from 2019, which was the last time they took it. And I think one of our biggest changes there, obstacles, was last year, because the high school was based on semesters. We had to have some kids who took the introductory physics first semester, and then still had to take the exam in June. So we set it up that most of the honors kids took it the first semester. We figured they had a better shot of retaining some of that information before we got to June. And then those CP1 and CP2 levels had it second semester. So we still had a very close pass rate, as we did the year before. We just had fewer kids that scored in the advanced, which would have been, you know, most of those honors-level kids. We have a few kids who didn't pass. Some of those were kids were fully remote all year. Some of those kids were transfers, et cetera. And those kids are always given additional opportunities to take the exam, because they have to pass one of the STE MCAS in order to graduate, especially the sophomores and the freshmen, they have to pass. At the middle school level, we had, Johnson had an 89% pass rate, and Byrd had a 90% pass rate, and those were both close to. There are former ones in 2019 as well. And again, some of the classes, because of the remoteness, seem to weigh in on those scores. What we're working on this year at the high school is the teachers, the freshman physics teachers have met with some of the math teachers, to make sure we're using common language, because there are a lot of algebra-based problems in the physics curriculum. The teachers are constantly updating unit packets that the kids work through, and making sure that their common assessments include MCAS-based questions. At the middle school level, one of the things they found was the free response the kids are doing, especially in the computer-based tests. It wasn't something they had seen before, so they're trying to incorporate more of those so the kids can get the feel for how the page comes up, where they have to answer it. I think it confused a few kids, because we had a couple of kids who just kind of skipped a few of them. And they're also working with the English teachers, because what we refer to as claims evidence reasoning, the English teachers refer to as statement evidence argument, and it's the same thing. So we just want to make sure we get some common language there. And that's one of the things that the teachers are working on this year. Next slide. So this is the schedule for the MCAS this spring. So the eighth graders will take theirs sometime between April 26 and May 27. Obviously, we opt for a little bit later to make sure we get as much review in there. And that'll be a computer-based test, as well as the ninth grade introductory physics test. And that'll be June 7th and 8th. So teachers are planning on those. And I know at the high school level, they're making some of their larger tests or their term tests computer-based. So the kids are completing the whole thing on the computer, so they get that same opportunity. All right, next one. And then these are the scores for our AP courses. These scores are all, represent students who scored a three or higher. So AP exams, as you know, are scored from one to five. Anyone who scores a three or greater is considered passing. And all of these courses, the AP Bio, the AP Environmental Science, and the AP Physics 1 were run first semester, and the kids didn't take the exam till May. We gave kids opportunities almost weekly for review. Not a lot of them took advantage of it. And, I mean, one of the reasons is they had other AP classes, they had a full schedule, et cetera. And the AP Physics, this was the first year we ran it with a new teacher, and it was a new curriculum. So we kind of expected some bumps along the way there. And then this year, we're offering AP Physics 2 for the first time, and we'll be interested to see how that works. Some of those kids taking that class right now did take the AP Physics 1 last year. And if you go to the next slide, we just, I just looked at the last two years, and we have had a good significant enrollment of the number of kids taking AP. It was nice to see there was a strong interest in the AP Physics 2, because we had 15 kids sign up for it. And so in several cases here, it's more than, it's the same kid taking more than one AP class, but for the most part, we've had a good increase in the number of students taking AP courses. All right, so next slide. So some of the updates at the middle school. The teachers and the kids are very excited to be back on hands-on learning. It was difficult last year, having the teachers move from room to room. It was difficult to move science equipment, et cetera. So that's been something they've really enjoyed getting back to. Two of our teachers attended the MAS conference, which is the Massachusetts Association of Science Teachers in October. And they've brought back and shared some great resources. They found, one of them was something called data nuggets, in which the kids can collect data in the class, and then their data goes into a real-world data collection that scientists use. And so, you know, they kind of feel like they're part of the bigger picture when they're doing some of that data collection. So that's been an interesting thing that they've been able to do. One of the other things is tomorrow during our ed camp, we have a kind of a vertical meeting of six to 12 that we're planning. And there's a couple of things that I'd like to cover there, just to make sure that we have a lot of common language between the sixth through eighth grade teachers and the high school teachers. Looking at transition issues, obviously, what we're looking for as far as expectations and independent learners when they get into the high school. Looking at some of the skills they're doing as far as graphing and data collection, conversions, those kind of thing. So I'm interested to see and have that conversation with those teachers tomorrow, because it's been a while that we've been able to do that. And we also have had some staff turnover. And I always like to make sure they all know each other, since they don't necessarily see each other very often. One of the other things I didn't put on here, but that I talked to the middle school teachers about, was, was there anything they would take away from the remote learning last year that was positive? And one of the things they mentioned was, a lot of them had to make screencastifies, obviously, for kids who, for remote learning. And several teachers have used them this year, especially right now with all the absences, because then the kids are still getting the same instruction, even though they weren't in class to hear this teacher say it. So that's been something that's been very positive for them. And one of the other teachers mentioned that they, they noticed that the kids got, they had very rich class discussions with the nice, small groups. The kids were with the same group of kids all day long, so they're comfortable with each other, they're familiar with each other. And that was the one thing that they, they said was very interesting to see, and that they're encouraging again this year as well. All right, next slide. So at the high school, this summer, we had six teachers, including myself, participated in the Concord Consortium Inquiry Space Program. And the Concord Consortium is an organization that uses technology and inquiry to enable students and teachers to develop scientifically accurate data, which then can be analyzed and explored. And they use a program called CodeAP, which stands for Common Online Data Analysis Platform. It's really kind of fascinating, because we can take sensors that we have, plug them into the Chromebook, or they can just do it via Bluetooth into the Chromebook. It goes right into this application, and then the kids can manipulate the data any way they want. So it's a great way for them to really play with the data. A lot of times, we get so bogged down with just collecting it, that we want to move forward more into analyzing it, and the kind of patterns and trends they can see when they analyze data. So the program has been implemented with freshman physics and with the juniors in biology, with the teachers who attended this. And it continues, the kids are part of an online program that they kind of go through certain investigations, and they propose hypotheses, and then their data becomes a part of a larger group of data in the Concord Consortium. And the teachers are continuing this work through the year. Every month, we meet as one large PLC with all the people who were there this summer, so we can share ideas. They introduced new applications. I was, just this past week, they showed us an app on our phone that kids could use, and it can use all the sensors on your iPhone to measure acoustics. You can measure acceleration. You could measure centripetal force, all kinds, just from the sensors in your iPhone. So it was really kind of a fascinating app that would be able to be used for lots of different applications, especially in the physics classroom. The bio teachers kind of struggled to come up with something, but we were thinking this along the same way. So we meet every month for the large group, and then we also meet every month in our own disciplines. So I meet with the larger Concord Consortium PLC, and then I meet with the bio people as well, which is great, because people can troubleshoot, come up with ideas. So the people in our PLC, we have people from Portsmouth, Rhode Island. We have people from New Hampshire, and we have a couple teachers from California. So it's kind of interesting to be able to share all that information with them. The other thing that we are trying to do is get more PLC time. That's been a struggle this year. It's always been very helpful to have teachers have that time for collaboration and to look over common assessments and that kind of data. And one of our big takeaways from the remote learning was, last year, with the smaller class sizes, we had kids who were able to work one-on-one with the microscope. Generally, we have kids who share microscopes. And then the teachers always do a performance assessment, so that part of their exam, when they get to that unit, is the kids are given a slide. They have to put it on the microscope, they have to focus it in high and low power, and they have to be able to use the correct technique. And the teacher watches them do that. We always see kind of, some are real good and some are not, because somebody always lets somebody else do the work. And having the small class size, every kid was responsible for doing it themselves, and we really saw a huge uptake in their microscope skills, which was nice. All right, next slide. So going forward, some of the things that science education is looking toward is making sure that we have open space and inquiry-driven lessons. No matter where you look, whether it's the National Science Foundation or NGSS, inquiry is where it's all about, which is why the Concord Consortium was such a great find for us this summer, because it really helps us get the kids comfortable with it. And inquiry is not doing a cookbook lab. So most of the time, the kids go into a lab, they follow a procedure. You do this, you do that, you know what's going to happen before you even finish it. Whereas an inquiry-based lab, they don't know what's going to happen. One of the things I do with my own students is, we do a lab in which they take basically a hole punch and make punches of spinach leaves, and they put them in a solution, and they create a vacuum. So it forces all the air out of the spinach leaves, and they sink. And then when you put them under light, as they go through photosynthesis and they produce more oxygen, they start floating again. So they go through that procedure once, and then the next day, I say, all right, change a variable. What do you know about photosynthesis that you could change a variable and see what happens? So I have kids change the size of the circles. I have kids change the source of carbonation. I have kids change the distance from the light. I have kids wrap them in different colored cellophane, so they see what different wavelengths. They don't know what's going to happen, and they really get interested in it, because they say, what if we test this? I say, okay, go ahead. I don't know what's going to happen. And that's where inquiry comes, because that's where the ideas and the interest and really the dirty hands come from, in science. And that's where the lifelong learning comes from, and that's what we're always trying to get to. The other thing is, it's more about skills. As we all know, we can pick up our cell phone at any time and find any content out. You have the world at your disposal, in your hands. So it's really more about being able to ask questions, to develop models, to use models, to carry out investigations, to do mathematical and computational learning, to engage in argument from evidence, and be able to support what you're stating, and to communicate that information to other people. Those are the skills we work on with students, to make sure that they are prepared for what's coming next. Next slide. So Bill asked me to include how I would see us moving forward in science. One of the things we're really looking forward to is the new middle school, and the opportunities the kids will have to explore and investigate science. I was thinking about some of the things that they will be able to do, which would be exciting. And I came up with a bunch of different ideas, kind of things they would be able to do in their new science building, like build roller coasters, so they can look at the change between potential and kinetic energy, to measure velocity, to measure acceler- between potential and kinetic energy, to measure velocity, to measure acceleration. Use grow carts, which have different levels, trays with different levels of plants, with light and water on them, so that they can learn how to care for plants, learn how to propagate plants. To develop different models of planets and stars, and the phases of the moon, so they could actually see it, and how it changes. To set up different stations that they could look at chemical reactions, so they could actually see the difference between exothermic and endothermic reactions, and describe the changes, chemical and physical changes that they're seeing when they're doing that. Or to build a contained ecosystem, so that they can see how it changes over time, and what's necessary for an ecosystem to sustain itself. Even maybe have some type of way to house animals, whether it's just fish, that you can look at respiration rates in different environments, or it's small mammals or insects, and we could use them to study animal behavior. All of those things would be things that are going to be exciting to the kids and exciting to the teachers going forward. At the high school, being able to offer a greater variety of electives to serve more kids would really be where I would move forward, because there's such a vast difference in interest by students at the high school level. Maybe a botany class. I tell my students every year, I get on my soapbox about the lack of botany education in the DESE's curriculum, in science, and in the college board's curriculum. And I give them my little spiel, and I tell them, take a botany course when you get to college, because it's fascinating. And I'm worried no more botanists are coming out of Massachusetts, because it's just not in our curriculum anyway. That would be something that I would love to see. Astronomy, because kids have a definite interest in the stars and the planets. And then moving along in the ideas of technology, biomedicine, an additional biotechnology course, a zoology course. We have a classroom that has hissing cockroaches, and a tortoise, and a snake, and a bunch of other things in it. But the amount of things we could do with, you know, more opportunities to study those would be wonderful. And then finally, my last slide would be, you know, our wish list of things that we would look for, in order to achieve some of these things in science. Having a dedicated space for animals, or a dedicated space for a greenhouse. The marine science class has limited room to have tanks. They have turtles in there, but they would love to have a saltwater tank, and a freshwater tank, and a wave tank, and all the things you could use that. Some gene editing technology. We do have some things, but really being able to be on the forefront of CRISPR, and PCR, and some of those other types of gene editing, and let kids experience that, just to get them a sample or a taste, so they can develop an interest, and then really get into it in, you know, further types of study. Maybe a rooftop garden, using a weather station. I know there was one at Byrd for years, but it's gone, and it was outdated at the time. Outdoor classrooms, a planetarium. Just all the kinds of things we would wish for, to really make science education in Walpole dynamic. Can I answer any questions for anybody?
Questions from the committee, thank you very much, Mimi.
Sure. No, thank you. You gave us an awful lot of information. And we've been talking among ourselves at, in terms of budget, in terms of the new middle school, and in terms of doing some work at Walpole High School to be 21st century. So this is really timely, and it's great. I think that one of the things that we talked about was potentially reaching out to some of the businesses in the area that have, you know, potential for, well, long-term potential for jobs, but could be potential for internships, potential just partnerships. And, you know, we talked about how it's important to make sure that it's, you know, it's the staff being engaged in this conversation, because obviously, you'd be the ones who would have to put some of this into place. So it's, I think it's a really interesting time, and important that we connect with you guys on that level.
Yeah, there are a lot of, a lot of those businesses that are looking to do those kind of things. I know we were doing something with FM Global for a while, because they wanted kids to come in and take a look at their resources and that kind of thing. So I know they are looking for those types of opportunities.
Yeah, and when we think about the new buildings, you know, six through twelve, it's science and technology that change the most. And it, not that the opportunities aren't going to be there across the curriculum, but, you know, we want to give a special attention to science and technology. When you talked about the idea of giving kids a sampling of the topics, I think that's so key to, you know, because a lot of kids know what they want to do, well, a certain number of kids know what they want to do beyond high school, but the majority probably don't. So if we can think of ways to be innovative, so that they don't necessarily have to sign up for a full-year course, but they could get a sampling of, you know, four different scientific ideas, I think that would be helpful, too.
One of the, one of the things we've always tried to push is, you know, kids who take anatomy and physiology think, if I'm interested in the human body, my choices are a doctor or a nurse. And so we really try to open them up to, especially kids who may not go to a four-year college, there's plenty of opportunities for them, all across the spectrum of jobs that are available to them, that incorporate their knowledge of anatomy and physiology. So it's along the same idea that there's a lot of science and tech jobs out there, and there's only going to grow. And one of the things we say all the time is, we're probably training kids for jobs that don't even exist.
Yeah. No, I think that that's the opportunity that we all have right at the moment, so it's great to have you here. I have a couple of little, little kinds of questions. A few years ago, we started ninth grade physics. Do you feel like that is, was the right decision? It's paying off in the way that you had hoped it would?
Yeah, I do. I, I think having that fundamental at the ninth grade level, along with some of the problem-solving, is setting the kids up well to handle the chemistry and the biology. As you know, the biology curriculum is ever-changing. But just myself, last year, having taught the junior biology class, having those kids come in, knowing they already had the chemistry, they were much better set up to handle the organic compounds and understanding those, which was always a stumbling block in biology. And now, having had the chemistry before that, it was very helpful for them. And I think some of the basic algebraic work that they do in the formula manipulation at the freshman level helps them out with some of the stokeyometry and moeller mass things they have to run into in chemistry as well.
Okay, so that was my other question. You were talking about how the physics ties into algebra. Do you feel like the kids have enough of a background? Because they didn't take algebra technically as eighth graders.
Right. They have enough knowledge coming from what they get in eighth grade to be able to handle it. They don't do anything more than manipulate formulas. And, you know, so they're looking at velocity or speed equals distance over time, can you solve for time? Can you solve for distance? And, you know, they spend a lot of time working with them on, understanding how to do that. But once they got it down, that's, they're not, it doesn't progress like a math class does, to anything harder during the year. It's just different formulas.
Okay. And then my other question is related to chemistry. We've tailed off with AP chemistry. Is that because there's just not, not too much of an interest in it? Or, like, why would you?
I always have a couple of kids ask, but the way that our schedule is set up, there's, the eight, the college board requires a certain amount, a percentage of time in lab, and some of the labs in AP Chem take much longer than our current class size, class time. So even when we were offering it, the college board wouldn't approve our course until we agreed that at least once a cycle, the kids would stay after school and complete labs. So we had to add that in. It's just, it's a, you, it's really set up for classes or for schools that have double lab blocks or block scheduling, that they have ninety-minute classes, because otherwise it just doesn't work.
Interesting, okay. So related to that, if a kid is interested in going into nursing, or medicine, or, I don't even know, but maybe like physical therapy, they go into college and they have to take organic chemistry, kind of right off the bat. And I learned from some kids that were doing it, that they did, that many kids, they, they told me at least, took a community college class the summer before they were really going to have to take that, because the class is so hard.
Yeah.
So it makes me think, is there, is there a way to do a, an elective in organic and inorganic, sort of like the introduction, if there's no, if AP Chem doesn't work? Is that just something worth considering?
Yeah, we, we've actually talked about looking into kind of an elective, upper-level chemistry. That's not an AP chemistry, so it doesn't have to follow the college board's rules. But it could help kids out who have that additional interest in chemistry.
It seems like kids getting out of Walpole High do okay
Yeah.
in those classes. But it's a killer class. And I have a feeling that, that the, an intro that we could offer in high school might be a popular thing.
Right. It'd probably be something I would add to this elective list, is some type of advanced chemistry.
That's, okay, great. That's all I've got. Thank you, though.
I'm wondering if you can talk more specifically about what's happening with the six percent of ninth graders who didn't pass the physics exam last year, who are now tenth graders? What specific support are they getting to?
So most of those kids, unfortunately, missed passing by, passing is two-twenty, they got like two-eighteen. They came very close. So what we're doing is, DESE only offers a retake in February for the biology exam. So if you want to retake the physics exam, you have to wait till June. So what we're doing is, when they get in there closer to June, so the last couple, last quarter, we will give them support through Apex, or some of the other online learning. And then they'll have the opportunity to take it again. And if they're not successful, their junior year, they can take, they'll be taking biology, and they'll be able to take that. We don't have them take the chemistry one, because the DESE is doing away with the chemistry one. And it's, we follow the curriculum for the chemistry, obviously, but it's a very difficult exam, which is why they're doing away with it, because not that many schools use the chemistry exam. Most schools shifted away from it and use the biology or the introductory physics.
I'm not familiar with the Apex.
It's our new online learning in place of edgenuity
Okay.
that we used last year.
So do they access that during the school day, during like a study?
Yep.
Or their regular science class?
They would, they would have that during their study, the last quarter. So we, we have been able to narrow it down, so it just covers some of the, like, an overview of all the topics in physics that they need.
Okay. And so then it's the case that we make sure all of those students have a study and have a dedicated time to do that?
Yep, so we've been kind of charting those kids since the beginning of the year. We find out who it is at the beginning of the year. And a couple of those kids are back in physics anyway, because they were either in edgenuity last year and they didn't pass, so we just put them back in freshman physics.
Okay.
In some of those classes.
If they weren't taking physics class, would they have access to a department member who could, if they needed to, get some additional support?
Yes.
Or kind of monitoring what's happening with them?
Right, so their guidance counselors are keeping track of where they are, and then Jen Dolan and I are making sure that they're going to be set up to do that either morning.
All right, thank you very much.
Yep.
Were there questions or comments? Mrs. O'Malley. Mr. Hearn.
Just a quick comment. I loved when you were talking about the future of science, your bottom bullet point there about, more about skills than content. And of course, the content is important, but how the kids are, as you said, able to articulate it, to ask questions, to argue, to communicate, building that into what they're doing is fantastic skills, because those are the things, you know, as science changes, as technology changes, those aren't. And if you can, you know, a student can really harness that, it'll pave the way for success in college, and then, you know, it's great interview skills.
Yeah, and the, the, kind of an instructional report we get from the college board, they actually tell you how well you're doing in those practices, because the way the questions are set up, they can tell which practice they apply to, so then you get that feedback as well, which is really helpful.
Wow. That's cool.
Yeah.
I just had, one question, did you say they have to pass one of the two science MCASs, or they have to do, pass both?
In the high school?
Yeah.
Just one?
Just one.
Just one.
They only take a second one if they don't pass.
Oh, the second is only if they, okay.
Right, it's in very rare occasions, and typically, it's biology, their junior year.
Okay.
Anything further? Mrs. O'Malley, when Sean mentioned skills and not content, I hand heard from the bio-coloring books of twenty years ago. Kind of mild flashback, but one of the things you did mention, I, I think, this, this body we're looking at, trying to encourage our students to be a little more daring in what they, what they, what they kind of take a bite out of academically, so I'm glad to see that there's an increase in AP. And I think that's, that's really commendable, but I also, I really like what you said about, when we talk about botany, I like botany, too. That's a big gardener, and I was not like that in high school. I, I really like your movement to expand the, the different elective offerings, and while I worked in nursing for a long, long time, and heard the horror stories about organic chemistry, and I think that's great for a certain set of students, and maybe a, in many cases, a student at a higher level. I'd love to, it sounds like you're doing that to see, when we move these, open up these electives at a, at an on-level area, to really kind of encourage that on-level student. I got a tremendous amount out of an environmental science course later in my high school career, and I think that kind of set me up to be interested in that going forward for a long time. And it's awesome that there's now an AP in environmental science, but I'm, I really like the idea of kind of, because there's such a tremendous job market out there, I think, in a different era, we, we talked about, all right, you gotta get your three sciences out of the way, and then you gotta pass your senior year, you gotta get your three languages out of the way, and then you gotta pass your senior year. So hav- having that robust amount of kind of opportunities for academic curiosity and subject matter curiosity is, is really, I think, a cool thing. And as we said at the outset, obviously, when we look at the high school, it's, spoiler alert, it's, it's the part of the building that you're sitting in that we're, we're laser-focused on. And as we, we get excited about the new middle school, it's, it's those, those classrooms that are going to be very versatile that are really going to carry this district forward. So exciting stuff, and we're happy to have you back again soon to give us more updates.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good weekend.
You, too.
Moving on, our next order of business is a superintendent update. Do you have anything else besides Gilbert?
Just a couple of things besides Gilbert. Just to comment on the, the science with Mimi, that when I was at the high school, I was doing my walkthroughs with Principal Emblich, you know, he said, you know, what, what department would you like to go to? And I said, let's go to the science class. And I think I was at a physics, a chem, and then forensics, and marine biology. And I just was so impressed at the level of engagement of those, of those students, and just the, the high level of, of energy and enthusiasm of those teachers. You know, nothing against chem and physics, that was a great class and high-level engagement, but that forensics class, and even the marine biology class, like, I, I didn't want to leave. I really wanted to, to stay, so please thank them for me. It was, it was a great, great, great walkthroughs.
Great. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Just, just a couple of things, just budget update. You know, we continue to work on the budget for the next fiscal year, and we just had a budget workshop this week, and we'll have another budget hearing next Thursday, and the school committee will vote on the budget on January twenty-seventh. Ed camp, just a reminder, there's no school for students tomorrow, January fourteenth, that all staff will be participating in our traditional ed camp, which is designed to provide participant-driven professional development or training for our educators. There's really a focus on collaboration, and group expertise, and instructional design. And just for example, I was looking at, at some of the sessions this week, and that, that are run by even, you know, our staff members, on data tracking, and diversifying assessments, and a lot of technology and digital learning, as, as Mimi mentioned, creating digital choice boards to foster agency and engagement. There's coding, emojis, there's a lot of science, English, and math workshops, and as Mimi mentioned, even collaboration with the math and the physical sciences. So I think it's going to be, going to be a great day. And just finally, a reminder that we have kindergarten registration. I've, I've sent that out. Letters have gone home from the, from the schools. I'll, I'll mention it tomorrow, too, in my update. Also, too, that families could go to their neighborhood school during Also too, that families could go to their neighborhood school during registration week. That's through January 28th. But that if they're unable to go, we, during the, during the day because of work and other commitments, that they can come to the superintendent's office on Mondays and Wednesdays until 5:30 and Tuesday evenings until 8:00 PM. So thank you, Mary, for doing that. And then I think finally, I just have to do a thank you to the school committee members, the members of the central office, Walpole PD, your families for your help on New Year's Day. For those of you in the community that do not know, on Thursday, December 30th, at 3 o'clock PM, there was a meeting for all superintendents in which we were informed that we would need to pick up COVID tests December 31st for all of our staff prior to school opening on Monday. So Assistant Superintendent Han and I worked together to figure out how we would make that happen. A plan was put in place and Mr. Han planned to pick up the kits on New Year's Eve and distribute the kits and the masks that you picked up on, distribute all of that on New Year's Day. So that was done in less than 24 hours, that plan. And then at 9:36 that same night, all superintendents received an email indicating that the vendor, Desi's vendor for the 400, the COVID test kits could not fulfill their order. So the scheduled pickup test that was scheduled to be picked up was called off on New Year's Eve. And then about 6:30 on New Year's Eve, all superintendents received an email confirmation that Desi had secured the tests from a different vendor that were being flown in overnight. So the distribution of those tests would take place at a warehouse in Franklin on New Year's Day, beginning at 9:00 AM. So Mr. Han again on New Year's Day drove and picked that up very early to get in line. As he's texting me that there are probably about 30 cars in front of him at 8 o'clock in the morning. And we're also told that we received half as many kits and that the two test kits would need to be physically separated in order to provide enough test kits for one per employee and that there was only one set of directions. So after, you know, driving on New Year's Day, retrieving the test kits, you know, with the help from you and some of your family members and some people from central office. Thank you, Mrs. Sylvia. The staff had the opportunity to pick everything up on, on New Year's Day. So it really couldn't have happened without all of you and also the Walpole Police Station to allow the drive-through. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So I do think that, you know, a lot of times, you know, I know the school committee is always asking, you know, how can we support? I, I do want to also just somehow, if they, if Desi, if there was a way to try not to change the guidance during a holiday and also if we're going to distribute, if there's a way in the foreseeable future, if we could do it, you know, prior to staff going, going away. So I'm, I'm going to communicate that and.
Like plan ahead.
Not an unreasonable ask by any means.
So, so thank you, Mr. Han. Because it was difficult, but we, but we did it, right? We work as a team. So thank you.
The Han kids were a big hit. His daughters helping crack open things. It was fun. Let's, let's never ever do it again. But it was fun.
Thank you. Thank you. That's it.
Mrs. Galvin.
Just related to that, Bridgette, if you want to write to DESE, I, we, I would, I think we would all co-sign.
Yeah.
With you. Because it's, it's true. I mean, it's pretty basic, but yeah.
And it was, you know, they, it's just that, you know, they thought they had it and it was, you know, and, and they did apologize for it. But we just want to make sure like in the future. And it's tough with, with, with our, with our nursing department.
Yes.
When, and sometimes even Desi can't control when guidance comes out. But just to try to see if we can get, possible to get guidance out, not at these inopportune times.
Yeah.
I mean, regardless of the guidance, certainly everybody knew that a holiday break was coming and that people were going to be interacting with numerous people and possibly traveling and that there would likely be an increase in cases. So it was not unforeseeable that we would maybe want to put tests and masks in the hands of our staff. I don't think that magically became apparent on December 29th. So I, your good humor, Bridgette, is much appreciated and extends farther than mine.
Yeah. Well, it wasn't very, wasn't very humorous.
I think we all felt frustrated on your behalf and your behalf, Mr. Han, at, you know, a much deserved and much needed holiday break being disrupted in this manner. It's not really excusable. But you two handled it with aplomb as you always do. And I think we were all more and more than happy to, to support you and take some of the burden off of our staff.
Well, like Bill's mantra always is like, we can do this. And that's what, you know, he kept saying, we could do this. And, you know, we were able to do it. So thank you.
Other questions or comments with superintendent? Mr. Hearn.
There's a question about the kindergarten registration.
Yes.
What was the date that you mentioned they can do at the neighborhood schools?
They can do it now, all the way through the end of the month. End of the month.
Thank you.
And if it, if they can't, they can, if it's after that. We try to ask that, if they can get it into that window. So we start getting an idea of how many students we're going to have. So we can figure out how many sections we need.
Definitely. Is that different than in the past?
No.
Yeah. I don't think so. Okay.
Anything further? Thank you, Dr. Goff. Moving on from the superintendent's report, we move on to all business. The 2022-2023 school year calendar, second reading. Encloses proposed draft calendar for the 2022-2023 school year. I believe this went out with our notes last time, if that's correct. This calendar proposes that teachers will return to school on Monday, August the 29th. Students in grades one through 12 will return to school on Wednesday, August the 31st. Pre-K and kindergarten students will return to school on Tuesday, September the 6th, 2022. The last day of school for grades K to 11 without snow emergencies, freezing, COVID, the like, will be Wednesday, June the 14th, 2023. This is the second reading of the proposed 2022-2023 school year calendar. As always, this start date is subject to approval vote of the Walpole Teachers Association. The chair will entertain discussion or a vote to approve pending WTA vote calendar.
Motion to approve the calendar.
Second.
I have motion and second discussion.
Just a, a quick question. If there's been any feedback from the community or from the, the teachers that would warrant us adjusting anything?
No. And the WTO discussed that during, during.
Excellent. All those in favor? Opposed? Chair will call Ms. Gaetzic.
Yes.
Motion carries 700. Look at that.
You didn't know she was there, did you?
Yeah. We now have the 2022-2023 school committee meeting calendar, our second reading. We have the draft before us, which we looked at. Chair will entertain discussion. I want to point out, we're not meeting on Valentine's Day. I know that was a thing a few years ago. People laugh about. Questions, comments, motion for the chair? Ms. Syrek.
I like the fact that we moved the budget hearings up for previous conversations.
Anything further? Mr. Hearn.
Yeah. I just, I, I kind of like the change that was made this year. I think, are we conducting two, one and two simultaneously on the same evening this year?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I like that. I don't know if that's, I also like flexibility. I would tend towards flexibility. So I know school committee meetings, we don't need to vote to change, correct? This is just kind of like, we're throwing it out there for the edification of.
Under, yeah. For our own.
Everybody else.
And I think in the discussion, Mrs. Galvin, it's been noted, the town really starts the budget process early.
Yeah.
And we have a really great and collaborative relationship. But it, it may behoove us to also start those conversations earlier as well. It's, it's a lot of time, whether it's in January or December. But I, I, I think that's just something to be very aware of, that we may be looking to move back a little bit, move up the calendar a little bit in time.
Yeah. Even using, is the, the January 12th, there would be a regular school committee meeting. But I mean, even utilizing that for budget discussions as well. I don't, you know.
Yeah. There, there's nothing that says we don't, we need to have two distinct hearings. We always hold a third day, just in case. But that's, we have to hold a hearing.
Yeah.
That's what's requisite.
One.
Obviously. How we set that up. And Mrs. Galvin.
Yeah. I would just say every budget year is different. So it's hard to say now how we want to do that. But I definitely think we want to accelerate it because it's to our benefit to be able to have some real discussion with the town, the town administration before the December break. That's, that's what it comes down to. So I, I, I would go along with, has anybody made a motion for this yet?
No.
I would make a motion to approve this with the idea that we always adjust the school committee calendar. So, you know, we'll, I think that, that we should give some thought to what we want to do in terms of meeting the, the town administrators' schedule better. And that might mean that something about our schedule, but this is fine for now.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Galvin. Second by Ms. Syrek. All those in favor? Oppose? Chair will call Ms. Gaetzic.
Yes.
700. Motion carries. Middle school building project update. Mr. Green.
I don't have a great deal to say. They did start doing some borings or they're about to do some borings. This is sort of the, the very beginnings of the construction project. I missed the working group meeting the other day. I don't know if Dr. Goff, if anything came out of that. But the building committee will, within the next couple of months, really start to ramp up meetings. But there really hasn't been a great deal since the vote. It's interesting, you know, all this buildup and then, I know there's a great deal going on with TAP-A in terms of design work. But there hasn't been a great deal of, on our behalf yet.
And we've been involved in a lot of, Bill and I, in meetings with TAP-A, you know, the, the design team. We have a meeting with police and fire next week. So yeah, you're right. They have these meetings. They're looking at having a community meeting in March. So stay tuned for that, putting together those, those dates. And then also TAP-A, right, has been meeting with individual groups. They met about the, you know, auditorium, met about the central kitchen. I'm just looking at Mike Frisher, who's out there, and Maria Hall. So really meeting with those people who they need to get some additional feedback from as they're creating the design.
If they were born, if it was like 4 degrees out, somebody sent me a picture of it. It's the hottest day of the year out there. Excellent. Anything further? Seeing none. Moving on, subcommittee activity. Ms. Denizio? I, I know you sent us a, a little update. We're gonna probably bring in the students from master plan artists, but.
Yes. So the master plan steering committee invited students in the Design Two class at Walpole High School that's taught by Kate Engels to work on designing a logo that would accompany all of the materials that relate to the master plan. So whether that is the final document, documents along the way, flyers, poster boards, whatever it might be. And so a member of the committee met with the class, talked about what the master plan is and the process that the community is going to be going through over the next several months. And the students came up with a variety of amazing designs. Really everything that they put together was incredible. They were forwarded to the master plan steering committee anonymously. And each member of the committee voted for their favorites. And I'm happy to say that Ms. Cara Morris, who is a junior, was the winning designer. And so the logo that she designed will grace all of the master plan and steering committee materials going forward. And I think it was a great way to provide some relevant real-world design experience for our students. And I should mention too, that Chloe Bindon, Colleen Finn, and Ariana Corentis were runners-up in that process. But every, every design that we came across was actually quite impressive and incorporated aspects of Walpole, you know, sort of iconic imagery of the town and also what the students' understanding of the master plan was and kind of looking toward the future of Walpole, of the town of Walpole. So, so it was really exciting and I'll look forward to recognizing the students at a later meeting.
Dr. Goff?
And it, in addition to the subcommittees, we held the superintendent evaluation subcommittee. Nancy, it's important to note that we, we have a tech legislative breakfast that's scheduled for February 4th.
February 4th from 9 to 11. And it's virtual. We're all invited to attend. And, you know, it's a good, a good opportunity to connect with our specific legislators, but.
And it's nice because last year, they, they were able to get us in small breakout rooms.
Yes.
Because it was virtual. So I found it helpful to be able to talk to some of those stakeholders.
Anything further? Seeing none. Move on to citizens' comments. Seeing no members of the citizenry. Move on to approval warrants, donations, and minutes. Mr. Hearn.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following payroll warrants for the amounts listed in your packet. Numbers are 2222, 222, 2224. I think I might've done the first one wrong. There's only four twos there. I'll start over. For the payroll warrants, 2222 and 2224 and 2226.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hearn. Second by Ms. Denizio. All those in favor? Oppose? Chair will call Ms. Gaetzic.
Yes.
Excellent. Moving on.
I'd also like to make a motion to approve the following expense warrants for the amounts listed in your packets. Warrants are 222024, 222025, 222026, 222027, and 222028.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hearn. Second by Ms. Denizio. All those in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Chair will call Ms. Gaetzic.
Yes.
Excellent. Someone like to take minutes? A gift, rather.
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the following gifts and donations. To Boydin School, Fisher School, Old Post Road School, Byrd Middle School, and Johnson Middle School from Bay State Textiles Recycling in the amount of $251. To Old Post Road School from the Old Post Road School PAC, Follett Book Order for $1,280. Systemwide from the Walpole Women's Club, a nurse's donation in the amount of $300. And systemwide from Loiter's Environmental, excuse me, Inc., general donation, $100. Second.
Motion by Ms. Denizio. Second by Ms. Syrek. All those in favor? Oppose? Abstain? But Chair will call Ms. Gaetzic.
Yes.
Take minutes?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following school committee meetings. The December 9th, 2021 school committee meeting minutes and the December 20th, 2021 superintendent evaluation subcommittee meeting minutes.
Second. Motion by Ms. Syrek. Second by Mr. Green. All those in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Chair will call Ms. Gaetzic.
Yes.
Excellent.
And I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Chair will call Jen.
Yes.
Excellent. Have a very good evening, everyone.
Good night.